This special, thank you, this special meeting of the Hendersonville City Council. We have one item on our agenda, which is a public hearing. And we'll first hear from City Manager Connet with some comments, and then we will hear from Ms. Brady.
Thank you. Mayor Vol, Mayor of the City Council, thank you for allowing us to have this special meeting. I wanted to kind of address the council and the public and folks that are listening, because I know there's lots of questions regarding this particular project and why there's not significant amount of information out there. And we're not going to be able to divulge a lot of information. But in the world of economic development, we're dealing with private companies and private entities. And these private entities and this particular company is a North Carolina company looking to expand. And we're competing against three different locations, or we're the third of three locations. So this is about competition. And very much in the world of private business, confidentiality is critical, because they have suppliers, they have competitors, they have employees. And it's just very important that we are very cognizant and work with the company to keep things confidential until the point that they're ready to make an announcement. So as we go through today, the day's a public hearing. There's, there may be questions. We'll try to answer in our presentations what we can answer, but there's not a lot of information that we can give out to the public about the project as we go along. If we are successful in getting this project to come to Hendersonville and Henderson County, there'll be more information in the future. I want to assure the public that the council is very much in tune to what type projects they feel would be important to the community and would be good for the community and very much are asking staff and the Partnership for Economic Development tough questions about would this company be a good fit for our community? And we absolutely feel that it would be a great fit for our community. So again, I know there's lots of questions. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to answer many of them today. We'll provide what information we can, but that's just the nature of economic development in North Carolina and the reason we cannot name companies or give much details at this stage, because we are very much in competition mode against two other sites. And it's important for us to stay in the game so that we can bring great jobs and bring great tax base to our community. So I just want to start it out that way, and I'll turn it over to Brittany to move from there.
Thank you so very much. I'm Brittany Brady, President and CEO of the Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development. Thank you for calling this meeting today. Project Independence is an existing industry in North Carolina. It is competing for a new book of business and would like to request an offer of incentives and to purchase publicly owned land for fair market value for a proposed project. The project is in competition with actually three other locations in the United States. This opportunity would expand their operational capabilities within the state, improving their product line. The proposed project is considering expand or considering building on a site consisting of .2134 acres, having REID of 1010646. And .2 acre parcel, both parcels, portion of that real property showed that the plat is recorded on plat slide 7333 of the Henderson County Registry. Additionally, the proposed project may require waterline improvements and/or relocation. The project would construct an expansion facility and invest 80 million in real property and 105 million in business personal property from 2023 to 2027. 117 new jobs would be created between 2025 and 2027 with an average salary of at least 120% of the county's average wage, exceeding $52,437 annually. If incentives and the offer to sell the outlined project site to the company at fair market value, which is 1.355 million, then the company will report back to their leadership, evaluate all four locations in consideration, and make a decision based on the overall project competitiveness by the end of the quarter. Again, the total project investment is 1.85 million from 85 million from 2023 to 2027. Jobs would be 117 new positions with an average wage exceeding $52,437 annually, which is 120% of the county average wage. The city of Hendersonville's economic incentive package for this would be estimated at $5,505,500 and in the first year, an estimate of $26,000. Any questions you all have for me?
Anyone have questions? Ms. Brady.
All right, let's turn it back over to the City Manager at this time.
Thank you, Brittany. I would ask staff to pull up our public hearing slide. We'll get to a little more detail just of what Brittany was talking about here. So we're having our public hearing. Again, as Brittany said, it's an industrial facility, 185 million taxable capital, 105 million real property, 80 million personal property and equipment, 117 average, 117 jobs, average wage, 52,437 plus benefits. The proposing to, company proposed to purchase 22.4 acres and .2 acres from the city at fair market rate, fair market value of 1,355,000 purchase price, based on a updated appraisal of that site. Here's your proposed incentives. As Brittany said, $5.5 million paid in annual incentive payments, 11 annual payments. They will be staggered based on the investment, beginning in 2025 through 2035. Seven annual incentive payments for each of the five years of investments, equal to a max of 100% of their taxes that they have paid, assuming they meet all thresholds each year. The minimum amount they could get is 90%. If they meet less than that, they will receive nothing. And proceeds or the incentives will be paid from the general fund revenue. Economic incentives agreements will be entered to obligate the company to these terms. This is the site, as you see. I will point to the large site, 22.34 acres, which is if you're heading out, Balfour Road is on the right. I will make it clear that the historic ball field will be not part of the transaction. The ball field will remain and that acreage will remain with the city and ultimately be part of our conversation with Henderson County Public Schools. The ball field is currently being used by Henderson County High School baseball team. We expect that to continue into the future. So the large site there, and we have a small site at the bottom. We're setting that aside just in case there are road improvements that may be needed going forward. But I'd just draw your attention to the large site and showing that the historic ball field will be protected as well as the recreation facilities on that site. We would be, if the project is successful and they come to Henderson County and Hendersonville, we would be responsible for relocating and improve a water line. The pink is a section of line that we would remove or replace, relocate. And the purple would be upgrading of the existing line there to, for a larger size. The benefit of this project, not only benefiting the industry, but this is part of our water sewer master plan with a proposed plan to upgrade that line to improve water service in that area and loop the line in a future project. We are seeking grant funding to be able to assist offset of any portion of that cost, but the balance would have to be paid from our general fund and enterprise services. Things the City Council will have to find as part of economic development law in North Carolina, have to find a capital investment in job creation or economic development purposes that would benefit the public by generating additional taxable property and providing well-paid jobs for the city's citizens, paying a probable hourly wage in excess of $25 per hour, thus stimulating the local economy. The proposed wages are in excess of the median average wage in the city. Finding number two, the relocation and improvement of the city water lines running through and along the portion of the project site is necessary for the development of the project and is therefore an economic development purpose, providing a public benefit. And finding number three, the fair market value attracts A and B collectively, with the proposed restrictions, restrictive uses is $1,355,000. All those findings are included in your resolution, and then when the time, if council feels so, feel is appropriate, here's your suggested motion to approve the economic development incentives project independence. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Connet. Okay. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, has this public hearing been advertised in accordance with general statutes?
Yes.
We will open this public hearing. We have people who have signed up to speak, and the comments should be relative to this project. If you have other things to discuss, it'll have to wait for our next City Council meeting for general public comment. This is only in relation to this public hearing. First one signed up is Nathan Kennedy.
Good morning. Thanks for having us. I've had the pleasure of living in Hendersonville since 2005. Got involved in economic development in 2006 and just been blessed with the camaraderie and the support from the community since then. You know, economic developments existed long before that with a committee of 100 and helped bring in 130 manufacturers that we have. But literally, we've been keeping stats since 2006. And up to this point, had about $950 million in capital investment. This project would take us over the billion dollar mark in Hendersonville and Henderson County since 2006. So be a great milestone for our community. During that time, when we've been keeping these stats, over 3,172 jobs have also been created. So to be able to bring 117 more into our community, you know, at a very viable wage would be just another asset as well. So if you think about, you know, part of our mission is product development, to help support industry growth, bring in new industries, as well as workforce initiatives. And I've seen through the pandemic, more and more kids moving back to this community to be closer to family. And the ability to be able to create 117 jobs at a wage, you know, will just invite more of our kids that hopefully grew up here or people in the community that need a job. So, you know, that's ultimately our goal, to create a healthy economy. And, you know, we, people enjoy living here, working here, and playing here, you know, because that's, that's what we want to do is, is just promote healthy living and, you know, opportunities for jobs. And so we just appreciate the support that y'all have offered us through the years, especially from an infrastructure standpoint of water and sewers. It's vital for industry, and we support, you know, that help and then all the cooperation y'all provided us through the years. And we just ask that you support this project at the fullest. Thank you.
Nathan, I think I failed to request that everyone state their name and address officially for clerk's record, please.
Yeah, Nathan Kennedy, 100 Arbutus Lane, Hendersonville, North Carolina.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Good morning. Stephen Gualtney, 900 Toxway Drive, Hendersonville, North Carolina. And I'm here as well to support Project Independence and really appreciate you all having this public hearing today. We did a study at the partnership back in 2016 that showed for a family of four, two adults, two kids, you had to live in a house with a tax value of $830,000 just to break even on the services that it, the cost of the services to be provided to that household. And that's 2016 numbers. And so as everybody knows, cost of services have done nothing but go up. And, and we're in 2022, that number has done nothing but go, go higher. This project is going to be, as was mentioned, $185 million project of taxable, taxable assets. It'd be an expansion project in North Carolina. We, we hope this company is somebody that's going to continue to, would invest here well after that time and continue to bring taxable resources to the, to the area. And we're, we're thrilled about it. It's taken a lot of work. It's been great partnership with you guys, and we're just asking you guys to support the, support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. Lynn Williams, Chadwick Avenue. I do want to start by saying economic incentives, economic development is obviously a great thing for our community and bringing jobs to our community is a wonderful thing. So I do applaud that entire effort. My concerns here, well, I'll start with, you know, my, Hendersonville is my home. Our family has been here for 150-plus years. We value our home, our land, our parks, our clean air and water. I was wondering if you could pull up the image with the property lines again? I don't know if that's possible. Or is, are we, is it a question and where, no, it's just, you can't show the images from before? Oh, there we are. That's all. It was just up there so quick and we didn't have a chance to really see anything. So with the property lines, my question is, does this run along the river? That was, I know you said you can't say anything, so this isn't along the river. Is it in the flood plain? Okay, thank you for those answers. And then, is it possible to show the overlay with the satellite image with the trees? Please? Because my question is...
We don't have that.
We don't have that.
Oh, it showed it a minute ago. It showed a satellite image. Yeah.
That was the water lines.
Right, but below it, it shows the trees. There we are. So my question is, we're, yeah, it's kind of hard to see where the land would overlay on where the trees are there. But so my concern is that, obviously, if there's a swath of forest, that that would have to be treated delicately. Obviously, this would go before the, I would guess, I'm not sure if, how it's zoned, if it would come back to you guys for approval for the final design? And it would go through the tree board and all that? But this is my concern with the sale of this part of the property is there's a large amount of trees. Is there any care or thought taken to that so far when considering?
We've not gotten to that point as far as site planning and that, and that kind of stuff.
Okay. Because, oh, sorry. So my understanding is this is in what is Berkeley Park proper that we're selling?
Yes, ma'am.
And was there a deed or covenant on the park? Do you know that it could not be sold?
There, there, there is a deed when the city acquired the property some years ago from Kimberly-Clark Berkeley Mills. The prospective company is aware of it.
Yeah.
They know that to sell the property or to purchase the property, we will have to work through that with Kimberly-Clark.
Okay, so it's with, okay, the, so it's with an existing company that you can currently negotiate with? It's not an entity that...
That's correct.
Is set in stone.
It's between the city and Kimberly-Clark.
Got it, got it, okay. So currently, does Berkeley Park belong to Kimberly-Clark?
No, it does not.
But the deed is, the agreement on the deed is regulated by Kimberly-Clark because they're living and they...
Because they transferred the property to the city. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for that clarification. And then, just to clarify, you mentioned that you're still in conversations with the Henderson County about the other part of Berkeley Park. Is that correct? Did I hear you correctly when you said that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so does that leave any of Berkeley Park left after those two deals are done?
Yes, there's 25 acres on the other side of the road.
Got it. But that will not include the historic ball fields at that time? It'll be a separate?
That would be part, it, that would be part of, it'll be a public entity will own that at some point in the future, possibly. I mean, yeah, yes.
When you say a public entity, do you mean?
It's either the city or Henderson County Public Schools.
Okay, okay. So part of it will still remain a park?
Yes.
Thank you. Because, yeah, there's, none of this was clear at all on any of the documentation so far. So thank you for that. My concern is that the public commons and the public space, which is really important to our city, is going to be sold off. After the, during the pandemic, you could see how important our public space is to our community, because a lot of people, especially in more urban areas, they really need those public spaces to be able to take off their masks and walk around and exercise. And so I just want to, once again, mention that it's important for us to preserve our space. So even if we did sell this property, then maybe, you know, the company would consider a park-like setting and public use potentially in some areas, kind of like Kimberly-Clark has, so that we can maintain that continuity. My question also is, is there any way that with those 70 jobs, there could be part of the conditions that some of them are actually local, like within the city of Hendersonville or within the county, so that we can guarantee that those local jobs are actually local and that that doesn't just bring in 70 new people with 70 new homes that will have to be built for...
117 jobs.
Sorry. Okay, 117. Okay, that went up.
And those jobs would be on this site?
Right. But what I mean is when you hire, right, you can hire from all over the country.
Oh, right, okay.
Or, and I was just wondering if it's possible, is one of the conditions that, you know, maybe to guarantee that it's local jobs?
It's not possible.
I see. Maybe the company might consider some type of agreement of helping us hire locally as well, to make sure those jobs stay in the community? Because we do have a housing crisis right now. Okay, and then, will this sale include any of the historic property per the designation of the historic?
The baseball field is not included. That is the historic property. It is not included at all. No part of it.
So the designation is just the field? It's not any other part of the...
Designation is for the field, correct?
Thank you.
What's inside the fences?
Actually, um, if I could, the, it is part of the designation, but it is not a contributing part of the designation, and so therefore it would have to be removed from the national, doesn't have to be, there's no restriction on developing it, but we would apply to have the acreage removed from the national historic designation.
I apologize, I misspoke.
That's okay, that's okay. I mean, it's coming on fast, so it's important, yeah, for us to figure that out. Okay, but it sounds like you wouldn't be just disregarding the designation. It sounds like you would be reducing it. And then, when the property is then sold, the other part of the property, would there be any part of the designated park left in the city of Hendersonville's?
Absolutely. I mean, so the ballpark will maintain is his National Register designation in the area right around the ballpark, you know, so, yes.
And then, but when we sell the ballpark, will there be any remaining?
We're not selling the ballpark.
Oh, I thought we were with the...
No. Ballpark is not being touched at all.
Now.
And forevermore.
Awesome.
As far as this deal.
As far as this deal, right.
Well, I mean, we're not planning to sell it. I'm saying, look at the line clearly.
Right, I understand.
Line is beneath the ballpark.
Right, and you said you were in communications with Henderson County school boards, and I thought that that was selling the ballpark. And so my question is, is there anything left of Berkeley Park after that second?
Per the mayor's quest, we're only talking about this deal, and, and we're talking about this deal. So in this deal, the city keeps the ballpark, and that's as far as we're discussing.
Got it. Okay. I was just bringing it up because you had mentioned it, so I just wanted to, but I can respect that, no problem. Okay. And then, the last part was that the notification is a bit challenging for people. It was just about a week out. It was posted on the city calendar about three days ago. And for the average working person, it's really hard for them to get here at 10:00 a.m. And so you might want to consider a second hearing before you make this decision. Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you. Just for the record, Madam Mayor, the legal requirements for the notice have been met. And in an effort to maintain confidentiality, we did meet the legal requirements. Thank you. Larry Phillips. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Chip Gould. Live at 227 Maple Hill Drive in Flat Rock. I spent most of my younger years growing up in the city of Hendersonville, not very far from where we're talking about here. And, and I commend you for, for looking at this optimistically, open mind, but with the, the due diligence necessary to put things in these areas that, that we love and cherish and are environmentally suitable for what we do in Henderson County. One of the, one of the early goals of economic development that the Committee 100 started and then consequently the partnership, was to create opportunities for our youth and others as well, to be able to come back to this area and have a job. Again, if you grew up here, when I grew up, 25 was a two-lane road. I went in the service, came back, and we had a Hardee's. I mean, it's big time to have a fast food restaurant. So where we are today is amazing. I think it's been controlled. I think it's been exceptional to bring a manufacturer in, offering these kind of wages is exceptional. And again, it's an opportunity for our residents and our youth to stay here or come back here. Blue Ridge Community College, I'm the chairman of that board. We are doing a tremendous job training workforce, and the numbers of people, enrollment at Blue Ridge is out the roof, meaning that they want training for these kind of jobs. That's what Blue Ridge is, what it's doing. I'm a local businessman. I have to look at my budget every day. You have to look at your budget every day. I'm sure that the city business is not unlike my business, and it costs are going up every day. And this is an opportunity for the city to gain some revenue. That's what I have to do in my business. I have to figure out a control expenses and increase the revenue. And what a great shot in the arm for the city of Hendersonville to have a project like this that's going to pay the kind of taxes and revenue with not a lot of service requirement. We mentioned the housing development and, and Manager Connet and I have had many, many conversations, and I'm sure you have too. What does it cost a city to have 800 house development versus putting in something like this and the revenue? And I'm sure you work on that, but I can, I can, I can bet the numbers are very favorable. So I thank you for your cooperation. I thank you and your consideration. I also thank you for your partnership on the Jable property. I think that was a historic moment for Henderson County and the city of Hendersonville, and I hope these opportunities to continue to come. And again, we obviously thank you for, for all you do and then ask for your support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beau Waddell, I live at 151 Berry Creek Drive in Flat Rock. And even though I don't live in the city, own a business that has multiple properties in the city of Hendersonville and pays taxes, and I just appreciate the investment this company is, is proposing to make and the taxes that it will bring to the city, which will help every other business in keeping their taxes low. I know you provide incentives to this company to come and, and yes, that they pay the taxes and then you rebate them those, but it's, it's over such a short period of time in the life of the investment that they're making. So overall, it's going to be a win-win for the city of Hendersonville, and I just ask that you please consider favorably this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment who didn't have a chance to sign in? Anyone else who would like to comment? Now we'll close that public hearing.
Madam Mayor, there's online comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hunter Jones, you've been unmuted?
Good morning, everybody. Just want to make quick comments. Overall, I mean, hate to see some of this parkland go from originally, but I think this will be a great project to move into the facilities. Brittany and her team do a great job with the rest of Henderson County. I would say one thing, if there's any way we could add a little bit more of an incentive, I know this is a competitive nature, looking to add maybe some trail connectivity around the ballpark to the facilities as well. the ballpark to the facilities as well, along with the water lines, mainly just to keep everything a little bit more connected close to that greenway area. Again, another incentive for wellness for the employees coming in for this new facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hunter Jones, 600 Heben Road, sorry.
Ken Fitch, you've been unmuted.
Ken Fitch, 1046 Patton Street. The presence of compatible industries have proven invaluable in diversifying the local economy, and they can expand tax base to support essential services for the community. And indeed, this location was the site of a major industry that had an important role in our local history, an industry that was distinguished by its services to the local and larger community in the Mill Village and beyond, especially with its unique park amenities that are receiving national recognition. And the inescapable questions here are about the impact on those historic natural and cultural amenities with this proposed project in what we have come to know as Berkeley Park. The public understanding was that the property was transferred to the city with a restrictive covenant, and has raised earlier some explanation of that factor as this current proposal goes forward would be very important. We're also aware of the nexus of the Oklahua Greenway and the historic quarry that is national register eligible, and have concerns about protection and access to those unique resources. When the national register designation was first considered many, many years ago, the quarry was part of the discussion. This was the source of the granite for the Biltmore House, and it did have a function within the Mill community at that time. But it was recognized, this is going back years, that this would require additional expensive, beyond-budget natural resource and archaeological surveys, and the decision was made to concentrate on the ball field for this first application, where the quarry could be considered later. But going forward, measures with respect to these resources and access, it would seem that they could be easily incorporated into a plan for the commercial site and have compatibility as Mr. Jones has just suggested in his comment. So I think that to be aware of the meaning of this place going forward, I think is an important thing, to engage in discussions with the prospective occupant of the site, I think is important. I think it just would enhance the economic, but also the, the community value of this project in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Anyone else here? Okay, now we will close that public hearing. Thank you. Council, discussion or a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council approve the resolution by the city of Hendersonville City Council to approve economic development incentives for project independence.
Is there any discussion? Not, those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Ayes have it. Motion carries, and we are in support of project independence. Thank you all. We have no further business on our agenda, so we are adjourned.